Wow. Welcome, everyone, to the May 9 City Council Work Session. It appears our mics are working tonight, I think. I wanted to take note that Councilor Polling is joining us by phone, and I think that Councilor Zelenka will be joining us by phone as well. We have two items on our work session having to do with downtown. I'll turn it over to the manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll ask Danny and his team to make the presentations for tonight.
Good evening. This is a continuation of discussions that we've been having around downtown improvements, and council has identified four projects. And this evening, we want to continue discussion specifically about funding options for these four projects that council has identified. And the projects are the Downtown Fiber Project, which we had a work session a couple weeks ago regarding fiber, the Farmer's Market, Park Blocks and Open Space, and the old LCC Building. This evening, we want to focus on the Farmer's Market in the first half of the work session and then Park Blocks and Open Space in the latter. And as we mentioned in the last work session, council has expressed an interest in advancing all four of these projects. So ultimately, we're trying to keep our eye on funding strategies for this package of projects, but at the same time, we're talking about them individually and looking at funding strategies individually for each one of those. So that poses a little bit of a challenge because there's a lot of mixing and matching, and you could do one but not do the other three in some options. So again, we're keeping our eye on all four of these as we move forward. Starting with the Farmer's Market improvements, and you know, the term improvement really implies that we're trying to solve a problem. And in the Farmer's Market case, the problem really is that the space is highly inadequate. The Farmer's Market has a 100-year history in Eugene. It has a rich tradition. When you couple that with the importance that food plays in our community, in everyday lives of our community members, the important role that the food industry cluster plays in our economy, and the important social role, really, that the Farmer's Market plays as a gathering place for our community, I think it's fairly easy to recognize that we're not really providing the space that reflects kind of the history and the importance of the Farmer's Market. And Nan will elaborate on that a little. You know, across the country, communities are embracing their food heritage. There's a movement towards, you know, locally grown and locally sourced food. And a lot of those communities are responding with permanent spaces for food and for Farmer's Markets that clearly match and kind of reflect the importance of food and locally grown food, and the importance of gathering spaces in the community. Here in Eugene, our market has struggled to maintain a permanent presence in the historical center of the community, as other uses like butterfly parking garages have kind of pushed the Farmer's Market into space that really doesn't maximize the opportunity for the market to thrive and for the community to enjoy the market to its greatest extent. But the good news is there's recent progress. We have active discussions with the county regarding the permanent home for the market. We're partnered with the county and working with the university's Community Planning Workshop. They're currently working on a feasibility analysis for a permanent market, and that work is underway. So at this point, we're moving forward under the assumptions that all the partners are committed to solving the Farmer's Market space problem, that there is a, will be hopefully a viable permanent space opportunity that emerges from this process, and that this Farmer's Market opportunity really is a priority downtown improvement project for the council and the community. So Nan will continue the discussion of downtown improvements and funding options, again, leading with the Farmer's Market, and then we'll move towards, in the second half of the work session, talk about the Park Blocks and Open Space.
Great. Thanks, Danny. And good evening. I'd like to start with a quick summary of this project, which is to improve the presence and impact of the Farmer's Market. I'm really echoing, I hope I'm not, to everybody listening. Do I sound relatively...
We're all echoing.
Okay.
Turned up pretty high.
Just don't get too close.
So if you go to the city's website, this is the first image that you'll see. We all understand why we thought this was the right image to have on our homepage, because our Farmer's Market is awesome. It's how people in town connect to the amazing heritage and abundance that is a trademark of our region for generations, and a hugely important part of our community's identity and quality of life. Now, on this one, there's a reason why the photo, the other photo, was cropped the way it was. Because in this photo, it shows that the farmers are actually stuck on a site really like the edges of a postage stamp. They're just around the edges of the Butterfly Lot. So what I'd like to do this evening is take a look at the Farmer's Market, the activity, the value of the activity, existing conditions, goals, options, and then the funding. First, the Farmer's Market brings local, high-quality food. It was hard to find a photo that was less than delicious. It's a significantly important draw for downtown. And the market provides a significant activity downtown, because people come to the market or they're downtown and they discover the market. The market is also a huge economic engine, supporting our local farmers, which is part of an important economic strategy, and it supports our regional economy as well. So the market draws people downtown. People come week after week to discover what's new in season. The market has economic impact and community impact, and synergy with the Saturday Market. Let's look at the existing conditions. High-quality food, low-quality space. The market is located at the south end of the Butterfly Lot. Because of the cramped site, it also spread out along the sidewalks to the east and west and to Park Street as well. The conditions are far from ideal. It's not accessible. There are plenty of fixed obstacles, no running water, inadequate power, inadequate space. The farmers have been successful, but the space has lacked the amenities that they need for a greater impact and a greater degree of success. They've expressed their desire to stay on this spot where they started more than 100 years ago. And there's no room to grow, no expansion space, no room to add new vendors or new products. We don't know what the solution is for them. It depends on decisions made by Lane County in collaboration with the city. This is a true partnership moment. But the Farmer's Market has expressed a desire to be where they are now. That's their preference. So the city and the county, as Danny mentioned, are partnering on a study by folks of the UVO to determine the financial feasibility of a permanent facility. And the study will help us understand the demand for a site, a size that is viable, and an operating structure that is viable, and the right location. We know the goals. Help the farmers flourish, keep them successful, maintain downtown vibrancy, create a high-quality downtown experience that draws all ages, all incomes, residents, workers, visitors, and in 2021, people from around the world. And we want to create a place that reinforces community. What we know is that people bumping into people downtown is a really important metric for a sustainable, healthy community, a place where people want to see groups. And I was at the market this Saturday to take these photos. Groups of people would bump into each other and start a conversation, welcome each other, and then reinforce the social fabric. And that happens in part because of activities like the Farmer's Market. We understand the benefits of the Farmer's Market, but let's look at other comparable communities to see what they've done to support their farmers and downtown vibrancy. This is a center, the Farmer's Market Center from Olympia, Washington. It was a purpose-built structure, so a structure built for them in 1996. It would cost about $1.5 million today. Did that be better? Okay. All right, I'm going to switch over. And thanks. The population in Olympia is about 50,000, so they're a smaller community than we are. It was, at the time, constructed with 850,000 of city funds with 123,000 in port money. This is what it looks like on the inside. It brings in 250,000 visitors, $5 million of revenue annually. It's a wooden structure that houses the market, and they've expanded to other related products. In Bellingham, a population a little bit smaller than ours, bigger than Olympia, the population's about 115,000. The exterior actually looks like our Halt Center, just coincidence. The Bellingham Farmer's Market was built in 2006. It's part of the Depot Market Square, and the cost in '06 was about $2.5 million in state, city, county, and private funds, and it's about 7,000 square feet. I'm going to turn this over to Sue to talk about funding.
So now we want to transition to talk about how to pay for all these great ideas that we might have about the Farmer's Market. When we're thinking about the funding plans for each of the projects, each of the four projects that Danny mentioned, there are some key considerations we wanted to keep in mind. First, that we have four projects under consideration at the moment, so we want to keep all those projects and the desired outcomes for all of those in mind as you're looking for the funding options for each one of them. We also want to look at the different potential impacts on taxpayers and the overlapping taxing districts as we think about how to pay for these projects. So for the Farmer's Market, we had proposed three potential project packages back in March, and they ranged in total cost from $1.5 to $7 million, including a half a million dollars of existing urban renewal funding. I'm going to go through the matrix of alternate funding strategies for the Farmer's Market with these in mind. So this is a matrix that we used for the Downtown Fiber Project presentation that Nan gave to you recently, and this shows a handful of viable strategies for the Farmer's Market funding. This vertical axis shows the impact or amount of potential funds, and the horizontal axis shows the relative feasibility. So the higher the funding sources on the chart, the more funds associated, the further to the right, the more feasible. So it's possible there could be grants available for the Farmer's Market project, although staff haven't identified anything specific at this time. Grants tend to be highly competitive and typically small in size for this type of project. At best, this would be a supplemental funding source, not likely a primary funding source for the project. Private funds could be potentially available. That might include donations from the public or contributions from the farmers. This is a feasible funding source, but not likely to be a significant amount of dollars. Parks SDCs. We sent you some detailed information in January about the possibility of using parks SDCs for the proposed projects, and that included a list of the SDC priority projects. So the Farmer's Market would be eligible for partial funding from parks SDCs at a priority level of four. The council approved parks SDC methodology includes a specific line item for acquisition to expand the park blocks, and that would be at 35% of the purchase amount. General obligation bonds, next on the list. Council could ask voters to approve a GEO bond for the Farmer's Market project. The earliest this could go to voters would be in November. It would mean that property taxes would go up to pay for the project. Local option levy is on the list also, but for a capital project like this one, it makes more sense to ask voters for money outside of the Measure 5 tax rate limits. Use of GEO bonds for this project could potentially dampen voter appetite for other bond proposals put forth by the council. New general fund bond. So if the downtown urban renewal district were terminated, that would free up about $1 million in new ongoing general fund revenue. We've talked about the need to spend some of those dollars on ongoing downtown program support, and that we would use about half of the new dollars to potentially pay principal and interest on a bond for project costs. So putting all that together and looking at a potential funding goal of $1.5 to $7 million for the Farmer's Market, we would be putting together several different funding sources. There's the existing half a million dollars from urban renewal funds that are already set aside for this project, and those dollars would be available under any scenario. There might be some supplemental funds available from grants, donations, parks SDC, and so on. But there needs to be a significant amount of sort of base funding to achieve the funding goal. Three potential items are available for that base funding. The new general fund dollars that are freed up if urban renewal is terminated, a voter-approved GEO bond, or extending the downtown urban renewal district. Talk about each one a little bit more. So again, there's a half a million dollars of existing urban renewal funds that would be available in any case. If we had supplemental funds available, that would be great, but we haven't identified any yet, so we've got question marks in that place, as a placeholder. And then we would look for base funding of between $1 million and $6.5 million. So we could use the new general fund revenue as that base funding source. As I mentioned, about $1 million would be freed up if the downtown urban renewal district was terminated. If we were to use half of that for ongoing downtown project support, that would leave half to pay principal and interest on bonds. So if we were to issue 20-year bonds and pay those back at a half a million dollars a year, that would be a bonding capacity of about $6 million for all of the projects that we're talking about. So in a previous presentation, Nan mentioned that we would use $3 million of this resource for the Fiber Project, so that would leave about $3 million for the other three remaining projects, including the Farmer's Market, the Park Blocks, and Lane Community College. This would be sufficient to serve as the entire base funding for the first scenario, Scenario A, but it would be insufficient for the two larger Farmer's Market options that are under consideration. So what does that mean? This means that under Scenario A, we would be fully funded without the use of GEO bonds, but for Scenario B, we would need approximately $1 million to reach the funding goal, and Scenario C, about $3.5 million. The annual cost to taxpayers would be nothing additional in Scenario A, $1 per year additional in Scenario B, and $4 a year in Scenario C. For Scenario B, a $1 million GEO bond is kind of small to do on its own, so you'd probably want to package that with something else. So summarizing, we have two potential funding strategies for the Farmer's Market projects, either the original funding strategy that we brought with the Downtown Urban Renewal Plan Amendment, or the alternate funding strategy. The Urban Renewal Plan Amendment includes funding for all four of the council priorities. The alternate funding strategy is being presented in four separate work sessions, and only two of those have been presented so far. So the alternate plan does not yet address those other two potential projects. Urban renewal does not increase taxes for individuals, while the alternate funding strategy might, depending on the magnitude of the desired project funding. And continuing downtown urban renewal would result in School District 4J continuing to receive the benefit of additional property tax revenue, while ending tax increment financing would mean that Lane County would get slightly more tax revenue. Back to Nan.
Great. So we don't yet know what all the options are, so we're presenting a range of funding strategies to address the goal of providing sufficient space and infrastructure for the Farmer's Market, and to increase their viability, their presence, and their impact. Thank you. I look forward to the discussion.
Thank you. So you just said, Nan, is that we don't, we can't tell either us or the public what those options might be for the Farmer's Market yet, so that leaves a sort of a big hole in our, what we think we want to pay for or not pay for. So sooner we can zero in on that, the easier it is for us to think about it. I was thinking about the economic development goal we have and the cluster goal that we have, and that the county is taking the lead on that and really popping that out, or the chamber is taking the lead on it. And so I think when we think about this, we should be thinking about our part in bringing that to reality. And I'm curious to know how much economic benefit we think we might get generally, under whatever scenario you end up bringing before us, for Farmer's Market improvements. And I wanted to say that I'm inclined to like it to be as lighted as it can possibly be and as much outdoor as it can be. And then I wanted to bring up one other thought for you all, that when you think about the park blocks and you think about the Farmer's Market, and we have the Saturday Market on the other side, that is another foundational kind of market that we have in our area. It doesn't need the same things as the Farmer's Market does, but it does, that's an area that we've identified that needs an upgrade too. So I don't know if there's something synergistic as we think about this, about making improvements that can enhance the future for both market areas simultaneously, as opposed to thinking of them as separated. Because I think the public loves their Farmer's Market and they love their Saturday Market. And Saturday Market, we already know, has a long-term economic engine for our area, and does a lot of incubator work for us. So I just think that it would be good for us to think about that in that way. Just bring those things up for you. Okay, I'm going to... Betty?
Thank you. First, I want to know when, I didn't know that the LCC building was a council priority. Did we decide that?
Yeah.
When you mentioned four council priorities, I didn't...
Those are the four items that at a previous work session you asked us to provide more information on as part of this conversation. I think, actually, Greg, you brought that into the conversation.
Yeah, it was part of the package that we wanted to have analysis over.
But we didn't say that was a priority, helping LCC with their building.
What you asked us to do is analyze these four particular projects, and so...
Okay. You brought them to us, and then we... Okay.
Well, what I would, I'm just nuancing a little bit. The council actually directed us to go look at these four projects, and now we're bringing them back to you.
Thank you. So why are we having, you're saying it was the council that decided we wanted to do four things together?
What council said is you'd like information on these particular four projects, and we're in the process of deciding what, if anything, you'd like to move forward on any or none of these projects.
Okay. Well, I don't think we should be discussing all four together, and I think that the reason we're doing this now is because of urban renewal, because staff wants us to continue urban renewal.
I'm also going to have to object to that. We did not bring up urban renewal as the conversation. Others on council brought urban renewal to the table. We did not.
Oh, thank you. Okay, that's all for now. Thank you.
Okay, I've got George, and Mike, and then Claire and Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at page 16, funding goal, and I see on the second line, it says that existing urban renewal funds are going to be used for $500,000. We don't really have that money to use, do we? I mean, the debt is almost paid off, will be paid off by the end of the, by the end of this calendar year. That's more of a borrowing capacity, isn't it?
No, we have actual cash that we can use to pay for those projects, and I think Glenn has spoken to this in the past several times and said that that is available under any scenario.
It would not be available, my understanding is it would not be available if the, if, I mean, when the urban renewal district terminates, that anything left in the account next, the year after, goes back to the tax system for redistribution for the jurisdictions. We don't get to keep the full $500,000. That's how I have read the ORS.
Right. I think what Glenn has said is that anything that's left after satisfying all the commitments of the district, and that would be one of the commitments of the district, so anything above and beyond what we need to satisfy the commitments of the district, including that half a million dollars for the Farmer's Market, would go back to the overlapping taxing districts.
I see. Well, I think we're going to have to disagree on this, because my, the way I read it is, yes, the commitments, but that is the debt incurred, debt that's actually been incurred that $500,000 has been sitting there for six years, and so I guess we'll have to disagree on the interpretation there. I'd like to point out for everyone that, you know, we've had this $500,000, and there's, and nothing's happened for six years. We amended the plan in 2010, and we've seen no plans to use this, no improvements whatsoever, and I just, you know, I, I think that now at the last minute, when the district's set to terminate, it's just, to me, it just seems a kind of a desperate attempt to keep the district going. It's like, we have to do this. We have to use this for Farmer's Market. And I'm just wondering why, why staff in the six years, since we amended the plan, has not come up with any drawings, any cost estimates, any, even the slightest suggestion of what some of the improvements would be and how much, and how we would get to the $500,000 figure.
I can address that question. Two reasons. Number one, we did, we started a citizens committee, including Farmer's Market representatives, to look at how they might spend that. We did that quite a number of years ago. And what they quickly realized was that $500,000 could be the seed money for the larger fix that they really needed, the true, the true range of improvements that they were looking at, and they didn't want to spend it down on smaller things. And the second reason is that they were hesitant to spend it on things that would later be taken out, because if a more comprehensive solution came forward.
I see. Well, that, I believe that that should have been presented in the plan back in 2010, that as an option, and it was, and it was, the way I read it, and I, you know, voted for the plan, was that it was limited to $500,000 and that there would be no other, you know, because with $500,000, you can do a lot. You can put in restaurants, you can put in new pavilions. You can actually do quite a bit if you use it wisely. And I will need another round, please, Mayor.
Mike, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Recently, a 4J school board member expressed to me some pretty strong concern about the potential for us to let this district lapse because of the 400 grand that it will cost students locally. If we wanted to make them whole, for the 400 grand it'll cost the school district if this terminates, could we give it to them, or would we, would that just affect their state formula? For, I mean, how would that, what would be the effect?
I think we could give them the dollars that would come out of the $1 million of general fund money that would be freed up.
The ones you said were both already, both halves of which were already obligated if we do this?
Right. There'd be less money then to do other things.
Huh.
And I'm not positive what impact that would have on the state school funding formula, but I, I think it would be outside of that, because it's not property tax revenue at that point. It would be like a donation to the school.
So we could make them whole, but it would cost us another 400 grand. We'd have to find somewhere to make the school district whole if we decide to let this district lapse. Is that correct? I, Betty, brought this up in December for one reason, the funding of ultra-high-speed fiber. That was the only thing I was interested in using the extension of urban renewal for, because timing mattered. We needed to do that more quickly than we can afford to wait on several other funding streams for. And to take real advantage of it, it needed to be done quickly. That's why I made that motion for that one thing. I was concerned that adding too many ornaments to this Christmas tree would make it, well, would make it fall over in the public's eye, and I think we are still in that danger. So I would urge that, I could be convinced that it might be a good idea for us to consider some very, very scaled back, very small, much smaller than we've discussed, improvements to the downtown park blocks, and at a maximum, the 1.5 of the Farmer's Market. Those two things in addition to that, I might be convinced that that's worth discussion, but I still believe that if it causes a negative public reaction, that costs us the capacity to do fiber in a timely way, that it's not worth it to do that way. So that's, that's my feeling. I wish we had not made this whole package of things this way, and coupled it to this discussion, but thank you.
Claire?
Thank you. Yeah, so, you know, I'd asked about that, if we let the district expire, the fact that we had this identified project for the Farmer's Market, what would be the impact on that? And I remember distinctly our legal counsel giving his legal opinion that the $500,000 would stay there in perpetuity, perhaps, until the complicated issue of how we actually get the space for the Farmer's Market is resolved. So I have confidence in the legal opinion that's been provided by... So I have confidence in the legal opinion that's been provided by our legal counsel on that. But regardless, we also know that the market is too cramped in its current space, doesn't have the infrastructure it really needs to be efficient and more expansive than what it offers to customers and farmers. So I really believe, you know, this council needs to play a part in affirming our support for assisting the farmers' market in expanding. And whether it's a year-round market or a permanent space, it needs more space. And I think we need to recognize that we're kind of caught in a complexity of they really want to remain where they are for historic reasons and also customer service reasons with the Saturday market. They've expressed that. They'd like to expand into the butterfly lot. That's contingent on things happening with the county and their process for their needs in terms of whether it's a courthouse or parking. So it's not just an easy situation to work out. So my feeling is whether we, as a council, decide to continue urban renewal and use those funds for that, or we find some other strategy, and I appreciate the outline of other potential strategies for this, I hope that this council will recognize the value of supporting the farmers' market in this effort. So two questions. Are you aware of any conversation at the Lane County Board of Commissioners for what role they would play in terms of financial contribution towards this project? It is the Lane County Farmers Market. It is largely comprised of farmers who reside in the county, not in the city, although obviously city residents take full advantage of the market, but so do folks from other parts of the county. So are you aware of any conversation at the County Board of Commissioners around what their contribution might be to funding this project in the future?
We've had conversations at a staff level regarding the coordination and the possibility of the butterfly lot or moving the county courthouse over to where the city hall will be. We've had those conversations. We have not discussed any financial contribution.
And we're not aware of them having a conversation about that?
I'm not aware of any, and I haven't been in any conversations about financial contributions.
Okay. So I'm not really sure the best way to go about encouraging them to have that conversation. Maybe folks from the farmers' market could approach them as they've approached us and ask their support on that. And then the other thing, I noted that the last time we discussed this, there was a letter to the editor that raised concern that a year-round market would change its basic character, perhaps allow sales of non-locally-produced products. And I don't know if you've had any indication from the farmers' market board whether or not they would stay within their current parameters, which is locally-sourced produce, whether it was year-round or not, or if you have any information about that.
I might ask, Denny, in the conversations relative to the UFO study, haven't they discussed what kind of products they might offer?
Yeah, the market analysis that... feasibility analysis that the community planning workshop is undergoing looks at a whole range of what kind of space is needed, what's the mix of vendors, is it just, you know, farmers' produce and vegetables, et cetera, or there's an other mix of products. And so they polled the community, they polled the farmers, they brought Saturday market into the discussion. We'll see what emerges as far as the kind of range of possibilities for when it amounts to kind of a market hub, whether it be food and products, et cetera. So it's open-ended at this point.
Okay. Greg, you're up.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll just, for a point of clarification, remind us, we did ask the manager to bring us back a package of analysis around the four pieces of work that we were looking at as far as downtown improvements were concerned. We're looking at the farmers' market, we're looking at the refurbishment or revapping of the downtown... The old downtown LCC Center, high-speed fiber, which I think was top on the list from Councilor Clark, and the park blocks. And that analysis is being brought back to us. This is exactly what we've asked them to do. We have not decided to vote on anything. We haven't decided, you know, what the package of things are going to be. We haven't even decided on what funding source or what funding stream, if any, that we're going to do in terms of moving these projects forward, or if we're even going to move these projects forward, period. We are gathering information, hopefully that we're all doing that analysis, and at that point, we can decide what is the best way to move forward. As far as the farmers' market is concerned, I think that the farmers' market has acted very prudently and very cautiously in terms of moving forward and not spending money where, you know, something could go sideways or awry and then have an investment that really doesn't, you know, for lack of a better metaphor, bear fruit. Well, good. I learned this from prior, okay? So anyway...
It's a good metaphor.
It's a good metaphor. But truly, that is the case. And so before they pull the trigger, if you will, on spending resources, I think they need to really understand from their perspective how they're going to maximize the return on what resources that they have been designated out of, you know, this particular iteration of urban renewal funding. So I'm gonna support the farmers' market around this, and I think that, you know, hopefully in the future, we can find ways forward to move a strategy forward, to create something over there across the street that is currently not the best or most optimum piece of property for them to be located on.
Chris?
Mayor, could I be in the queue? This is Alex.
Sure.
And I was on mute when Greg did his... So I'm gonna groan now. Oh, my God.
So George Pollan, do you want to be in the queue?
Or just groan?
He may not be there.
He may not be there anymore. Okay, so go ahead, Chris.
Okay. I was really grateful when the council committed $500,000 six years ago. I thought it was a good show that we had a sincere interest in seeing a farmers' market go forward, and I think that that interest is still there. And that not a lot has happened in the six years is not, I think, because the city hasn't been continuing to be sincere, but that the ball's been in the county's court. I mean, you can't create plans, you can't do pricing, you can't do that other stuff if you don't have certainty about the site. And that's been kind of what's been hanging us up. But I do agree, there is a time crunch right now, and we're feeling a little bit of the... It's not anxiety, but a little bit of the impetus to respond to that time crunch because a source of financing that is available to us is about to go away. And so we have to ask relatively quickly, do we want to continue to keep this loan, keep this source of financing available to us? And we have to decide relatively quickly. So there is a time crunch, I agree. But the time crunch is not one that has suddenly just occurred all by itself. It's one we've actually been talking about for several months now. We knew this was coming. And we've been trying to be real deliberate about the conversation for if we do want to keep it, what should be in it, what kinds of alternatives might there be? So I think this has been going okay. But what comes down to a lot of it is what will the cost be and what will the capacity be and what will be the result when you're all done? Is this mechanism worthwhile to keep for the payoff you're gonna get for it? And that gets back to the notion of do we want one project, or do we want two, or do we want three? We've all expressed interest in different projects, and each one of us might have a different list. I think fiber would be up there for most of us, but I think some of the other projects would also be up there. And what's appealing to me is what if there were a mechanism that could get you all of these projects without creating any additional tax burden on the part of the people in Eugene? What if they could have all this stuff and it wouldn't cost them anymore? In fact, if anything, it would save money for the school district, save money for LCC, be able to be able to get stuff done without creating an additional tax burden. The certainty that you talked about up in your chart there, it's not, well, maybe we'll get a grant, maybe we'll get a bond, maybe we'll get this. This is a certain funding mechanism we've had literally for decades already in place. And so that's, I think, why this conversation needs to take place. I think why we do need to have it and why we need to continue to have it. I think it's good for the council to be the group that decides what exactly should be the list of items there. So you've brought us what we asked for. Now it's our job to decide which, if any or all, should be there. But the conversation does need to occur now because we either need to decide now or we let that tool go away. And I'm reluctant to let the tool go away without having the thoughtful conversation.
Thank you. Alan? Alan?
Unmute yourself, Alan.
He's looking for the mute button.
Unmute.
Okay, I finally figured it out. I finally figured out how to use my phone. Thank you. Yeah, I definitely think a farmers' market is something that we should be looking at. It's something that's very popular with the citizens of Eugene, it's something we've been interested in a long time. And I'll agree with the folks that have said that $500,000 has been sitting there for a very long time, and not by any fault of the city has it not been used. The farmers' market folks getting their act together has been a hard thing to come across, so hopefully that can move forward. I encourage them to use it sooner than later as opposed to just sitting on it or waiting for a larger project. Money just sitting there either goes away or gets used for some other purpose. So that was my advice to the folks at the farmers' market. As far as the mechanism is concerned, I think there's a lot of different ways to fund these projects, and over the long run, looking at different options other than urban renewal districts will benefit the city.
I think he's finished. Okay. Couple comments that I would like to make is, one is, I think, one way to look at this as you finish up the four different possible projects is to ask if there are any that people want to take off the table and see how many we want to keep on the table. And then, I think, you figure out what mechanism to pay for them. But it is a big... The first big decision to me seems to be what is it that you want or don't want on the table after you get a chance to hear everything? And then I do want to reiterate what people have said. Glenn told us twice that that money would stay until it was... Either the project was done or it was proactively removed. So that's... You can remove it, but proactively remove or it stays there until... And we had that... We've already had that round of discussion. This is the third round in that discussion. I also think that the... When you think about the market and you think about the community, I think if you really ask the broader community what they care about the most of all of these, it would be the market because there's something in it for everybody. I think we might think about the fiber because that has to do with our economic development plans and efforts, and people who are involved in that deeply care about it because it's what will make their business work better. I understand that. I just don't think it will resonate as much with the broader community as the market does. I think they're both important. And I just wanted to say that from my perspective, if the market... If the farmers' market finally decided what they really wanted, and they came to us, which they have, and said, "We really want this. We want to have this indoor-outdoor market," I think we should be thanking them for being prudent with the money that we already gave them and hold on to it to invest in the next steps to come along. So I appreciate them for doing it. And I'd also like to sort of reiterate that there are no ornaments on the tree now. The tree is bare. There will only be ornaments put on it when you decide to put them there. So just saying. Okay, so George, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have to agree with Alan. I mean, you know, we can pay for any and all of these projects without amending the urban renewal plan and extending the life of the district by, you know, five, 15. One of them was... One option was 40 years. It would be almost 100 years old then before it terminates. I mean, that's... Please, that's pretty ridiculous. I've got a few more questions about the actual farmers' market. Looking at the financial page, we see, you know, there's options 1.5 million, 4.5 million. What... Are there any, like, drawings or plans? I mean, what... Why would... To arrive at these figures? I mean, $1,7 million to build a farmers' market just seems like way, way too much money to me.
We've looked at a number of what we think are appropriate comparables from different cities. We showed a couple of them today. We had a beautiful one we didn't show from Grand Rapids. That was a $22 million project, which we thought was out of scale with our community and certainly with the financing that we're talking about. So we believe that these numbers are based in reality from our experience, our analysis of other community examples.
Okay. And the range, if I could just elaborate, the range really is kind of the minimum approach. Let's just take their existing space, for example, and make some improvements. Something in the middle might be some kind of structure covered, partially covered. The other might be something much more grand. It could be a building with air conditioning and, you know, different mix of vendors and all those kinds of things. So the range really is the breadth of possibilities, and they're just examples at this point, based on a little bit of research that we've done.
Okay. Has any thought been given to the management of the market? I mean, is the city gonna own the structure?
That is what the feasibility analysis is gonna look at, is operations, different structures. There's city-owned, nonprofit-owned, privately-owned. The market analysis is really looking at that whole range of possibilities and what the operating costs are for each one of those models.
When will we see that?
It should be completed in August.
Oh, August. Okay. All right. Hmm. That's kind of late. I mean, if it's gonna go on the, you know, urban renewal amendment and go to voters, that's way too late to have information for the voter's pamphlet. But, okay. So... And is the idea that it's a year-round market, so do the farmers sign yearly leases for their space?
Pardon, it's the same answer, right? That's all part of this feasibility analysis as far as, you know, they surveyed the farmers, for example. How many days can you be there? Would you want to be there? What works for you?
Yeah.
What's the most you can pay? All of those things are part of the analysis. And again, we don't have all that information yet, but it is forthcoming.
Okay. Yeah, well, I ask this because I, you know, if you have been to or Google the Olympia Market, you see that there's only... Let's see. January and February, they're open one day a week. And then during the growing season, they're open four days a week. They're not even open every day. And then the other three months, they're open two days a week. So I look at these figures and I go, gee, a million and a half dollars for, you know, someone that's... It's not gonna be a structure that's being used every day, probably, unless you make it more like a Pike Street Market and change the character and, you know, invite all comers and, you know, that's a possibility, I suppose. But that would... Is the market study contemplating anything like that, like other uses besides local growers?
They are looking at the full range of possibilities, yes, other products. Could even have tenants. Pike Street Market is a good example. There's a Starbucks in there and there's all kinds of things. So could have tenants there that are there permanently. I think they are really looking at the whole range of opportunity there.
Yeah, well, yeah, Pike Street Market ranges from the ridiculous to the sublime. I mean, you know, there's like really great stores in there, really tacky ones too, and that's what makes... I think that's what makes it so interesting. Okay, I guess that's enough for this round. Thank you.
So we're gonna try to wrap this up by 6:30 so we can go on to the next item. Greg?
Yeah, Denny, can you talk a little bit about some of the public-private possibilities in terms of, you know, say, we have a first-floor market, maybe even an additional second floor and the possibility of, say, you know, housing above that, some type of multi-unit development that could be part of a public-private partnership that could really, you know, enhance the whole footprint of the area?
Yeah, I mean, it's something that we've talked about a lot. I mean, I think, you know, as we'll learn in future discussions about open space, open space works best if there's adjoining uses that spill out into that space. So having market opportunities around the market, I think, would enhance the opportunity there, whether that be, you know, whatever, hotel or housing. there, whether that be, you know, whatever, hotel or housing. There are some examples. Vancouver has their public market basically that spills out of a housing project. I think Mayor Piercy retoured that, I think, years ago. So there are some examples. Again, we haven't dove into the market feasibility because that's the work that we're doing in partnership with the county and involving the U of O. So that work is, again, going on. And some of the models, again, they've looked at models all over the country, public-private, some with private development associated with it. So there's lots of case studies that'll come, will be part of that work. So we haven't really dove into that level at this point, but it's happening.
Mike, are you done?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I just, I have to say, I have always been a big supporter of the farmer's market, although I don't go much. I love the idea. I love the idea of community wellness. I love the idea of fresh food in that way, especially grown locally. I grow most of mine in my backyard, so I don't buy as much of it there, but it's this very same reason, it's the value of growing and eating that which has been done locally. And so as a supporter, I like the idea of helping them, and I'm glad we have the 500 in there. The reason I don't want to put too much more in is because although I hear people say that it's a big economic engine, in real dollars, I'm not certain comparatively to, say, the impact of fiber to 127 buildings and the millions in payroll that that would represent new jobs in our downtown. I'm not really sure it's comparable, but even if it was, most of the money that is made by farmers at the farmer's market, isn't it taken out of the city and into the county? Aren't most of the people who are there growing and selling county residents and not city residents?
I don't have that percentage, but we also know that what the market does, it draws people downtown.
Yes.
They go out for lunch.
Yes.
Or they choose to live downtown or work downtown.
Yeah. And that's certainly a good thing, and those are things we want to promote. But the reason I bring it up that, in that fashion, is because I do think that the county has a larger responsibility in this. I think that as a whole, it's called the Land County Farmer's Market for a reason, and we ought to encourage them to participate with us on this. If we were to add a few more dollars, like I mentioned, the 1.5, perhaps at the most, but it would, it would require that we be willing to do something for the county, maybe even need be, in order to get them to step up and participate even more strongly because it would benefit everyone to have the facility in our downtown. So I'm in favor of that. I don't think we should operate it like the city should. Then you're going to get into rules about, you know, who may sell there and who may not, where do they live, and, you know, or where do they, where was this grown or made? And boy, I tell you, I'd prefer that the city not get into that, but that's just a thought.
Betty?
If I could just interject, because there's been a reference to the county participation. One of the things that the county has is the waterflood lot. They own that property where the farmers are currently. And if you think about tomorrow, we're going to open the Innovation Center, the old Bradford's Building downtown. We didn't give cash to that project, but we put our property. And I think what the county has is a tremendous asset there. They have a half block. And so there's plenty of opportunities for the council or the county to participate with their property. So we fully anticipate them, if that's where the market ends up, to fully participate because they own the property, basically.
Betty? Thank you. Speaking of property, there's property right out here that could be added to the farmers if the county wants to give property that could be added to the space. And there's even covered, covered space. I do, I think the farmer's market is the very best thing we have in this city. It's where you see people, lots of people coming downtown and everybody's happy to be there. The sellers are happy, the buyers are happy. And I hear people who, when they come to town to visit, always go to our farmer's market. They think it's one of the best they've ever seen. I see people all the time there taking pictures of it and talking about it. I do think they need running water, and maybe this $500,000 could go toward things like running water and things that would make it easier for them to operate. But if the county could contribute this whole big space out here, including the covered part, we wouldn't need any money from them. I've been to the Vancouver Market too, which is very nice, and a lot of it is just outside. Some of it has an inside space with doors, like barn doors, that open so that they can be open and, when they're using it as a market and close other times. And, but we don't have a lot of space unless we get some more. And in a way, the fact that it's crowded is a part of the charm. It's, people don't mind being crowded when they're having so much fun and when everything is so beautiful. And also the fact that it's not year-round is, totally year-round is part of the charm. You find, you wait for everything to be in season. And then when the peppers come, it's really beautiful, but everything is beautiful in its own way and good. I go there every Tuesday and Thursday myself, and it's my very, very favorite thing to do. And for a lot of people it is. But I think anything we can do to help with the space, but I'm glad you mentioned the contributing property. We should talk to the county about their, the way, the Free Speech Plaza and this covered area out here. And thank you.
Sorry.
Madam Mayor, can I say something real quick, please?
Surely, George.
Yeah, I won't take up much time because I realize you want to end this part of the conversation at 6:30. Briefly, I agree with the comments that Mike, Claire, and Chris made in the first round. There have been four different farmer's markets referenced tonight during our conversation. I think it was Tacoma, Billingham, Vancouver, and one other one. The thing that we have to remember when we start comparing to farmer's markets like those is we're not surrounded by other cities and mass populations like those other four that were mentioned. So, you know, we're kind of out here on our own. So to compare us in size and the cost of the building is one thing, but when we start talking about generating activity, we're way at the bottom of the list on that compared to the other ones. And then something that Betty just said, maybe, maybe it's time that the council and the board of commissioners and the appropriate staff lock ourselves in a room and have a discussion about, about either land swaps or funding or something, and not come out of that room until we come up with a definite course of action.
12-ounce or 16-ounce gloves?
Thank you.
If only we had the power. Couple of things I want to say is I think there's a lot, and other people can do that much better than I can, but there are a lot of rules and restrictions about the Free Speech Plaza and the usage of the Free Speech Plaza. And there's been many discussions over the years about whether we could sell things there, whether you could have a market extend over there, and those, that always ends up with it goes against the premises of why the Free Speech Plaza was built. So that's kind of where that ends up. The other thing I want to talk about, the current farmer's market is, and I think this is something that we and Eugene talk about all the time, do a lot of work on, and care, care deeply about, and that's accessibility. And as it's set up right now, it's very hard with anybody that's alternatively able or has any kind of navigation issues to get in there and make use of that market. It's just very difficult for that, for that reason. So just wanted to add that to the conversation. We're going to thank you for the presentation today. I'm sure they'd be happy to hear more ideas or thoughts. And we're going to move on to the second work session, the park blocks and open space.
I'll go right into this.
Okay.
As soon as Jason's loaded it. Perfect. Thank you. So we'll continue our discussion with the third of the four projects, park blocks and downtown open spaces. These spaces come alive during programmed events such as the Saturday Market, but most of the time, these spaces are empty. What we've heard from the public so far, these public spaces do not serve the whole community. They do not demonstrate the strengths of our city to guests, visitors, and newcomers. They are perceived as unfriendly and they are inaccessible. Their design is not optimized for community events, and they do not function as sufficient space for the growing number of people who want to live downtown. This is true for the other downtown open spaces, not just the park blocks. This is the Halt Center, very inaccessible in places and underutilized, although, again, comes to life when there are specific programmed events. But otherwise, there are very few people here, even next to a facility that has world-class So based on what we've heard, we're trying to respond in three ways. Number one, we heard councils say that the spaces should be considered as part of a system, not as unrelated, isolated entities. So, which is what we're doing as part of this proposed urban renewal amendment. Second, we've heard that a broad public engagement approach is necessary. So then in April, city staff led by cultural services released a request for proposals for a place-making consultant to do just that, to engage and listen to the community and then provide a concept for the design, programming, and management of these spaces. So this project dovetails with this discussion here. And third, based on the public engagement, we'll figure out what capital improvements are necessary, desired, and feasible. This response is the, really the focus of this presentation, capital improvements in the four of these spaces and the spaces, the paths that link between them. So one of the roles of city staff is to consider a holistic view of proposed changes. As an example, we need to keep the weekly operations of the Saturday Market in mind if we talk about any changes to the park blocks. We're also taking an inclusive view. Because public spaces serve all segments of the community, as those spaces get better, it's better for everyone. We are looking to other cities for best practices on place-making and different options, and this is a view from Fort Collins, Colorado. I'm going to include some of the other cities to open up the, just the possibilities. Cities of the 21st century are distinguishing themselves as much by the quality of urban experience as by their amenities. High-quality public spaces drive economic activity in addition to the economic activity in the adjoining uses. We know that the glowing, I'm sorry, the growing cluster of businesses and residents downtown, including the high-tech and the creative folks, are here because of the revitalization of downtown. Whereas infrastructure, like fiber, is a prerequisite, public spaces can be a deciding factor between Eugene and other cities such as Portland. That's pictured here. Far from being mere aesthetic window dressing, these spaces are recognized as a strong benefit across the triple bottom line, helping local businesses succeed as an economic driver of jobs, real estate, and tourism, an opportunity for improving mental health and well-being, and a place for community gathering and building social capital. This is taken from Detroit. It's the Campus Marcius Plaza. Because it was revitalized, people are coming back to downtown Detroit to hear concerts, to watch outdoor movies, to meet a date, to simply sit and relax. In this example, we're looking at movable chairs in both paved and planted areas. Both of those areas are entirely accessible. This is a Pittsburgh, this is the Pittsburgh Market Square, and it's actually a very close example to what we have here, a little bit smaller. They had four quadrants, and they joined them, but you can still drive through. They reincorporated them, but they included curbless streets, which is what this is showing. So that really expanded the area where activities could happen, including sitting with coffee or a market or a restaurant. This is a much smaller example. It's a courtyard in front of a museum in Birmingham. It could be a precedent as an example in front of the Halt Center. Art has been integrated into the essential design. The scale is appropriate. You wouldn't feel out of place sitting by yourself, or you could hold a much larger activity here. And two last examples, we could consider new amenities or overall comprehensive changes. We're not prepared to discuss those specific options because that needs to wait until the public engagement process provides insights. The two examples we're showing here, just a very clever, creative, public art use with a water fountain, and then a second fountain from New York. The fountain is designed so that you can fill up your wattle bottle really easily. And I'll turn the next part of this over to Sue.
Okay, funding considerations. These are basically the same funding considerations we talked about in the previous presentation. Keep those in mind as we go forward. So for the park blocks and open space, three potential scenarios were shown when Amanda brought you those back in March, and they ranged in costs from $8 million to $25 million. So we'll go through a similar conversation about potential alternate funding strategies with open space in mind. This is the same matrix that we saw for the farmer's market. A couple of things that are different about farmer's market versus this downtown open space. We have applied for a grant for some place-making activities for the downtown open space, and so that could potentially provide approximately $200,000 towards this project if we were to be successful. We also, a difference between this and the farmer's market is that there isn't a specific line item in the Park's SDC methodology for this project. Otherwise, all of those other items are the same. There were a couple of items that were in your council packet that didn't make it into the matrix. One of them was increased transient room tax. That would not likely add a significant amount annually to project funding, but it would be a feasible project funding source. It would likely have impacts on other city goals like economic, economic activity. And the state did just increase the transient room tax, and so that would have an impact on the affordability of hotel rooms for folks that are visiting. We had also mentioned in the packet that there are accessibility improvements to the park blocks might be available for funding from CDBG dollars. That's a feasible funding source, probably low impact also. And using those dollars would take away from other important human service priorities that we have. There were a couple of other smaller potential funding sources in your packet, both likely to be low dollars. If we were able to find grants for some of the roadwork, that's a potential item. And then we had also talked about the downtown service district and potentially adjusting those fees to have downtown property owners pay a portion of the projects. That could potentially have some impact on the momentum that we've been having with downtown revitalization because your businesses would then have higher costs to pay for a part of this project. So similar to what we showed for the farmer's market, we have a potential funding range of $8 to $25 million. We don't have any funding identified yet, so we'd have to look for significant base funding and then with the potential of supplemental funds like grants or donations. So here are some options for your scenario A, B, and C from $8 to $25 million. We've put in there a potential grant for $200,000 in each of the scenarios. There might be other funding sources, and if those were available, they would reduce the need for general obligation bonds. If the council were to choose the smallest of the options for the farmer's market, that would leave about $2 million left in general fund bonding capacity. So we've shown that in scenario A here. But if the council were to pick scenario B or C for the farmer's market, there wouldn't be any additional general fund bonding capacity. So we've shown zero. And then the balance for all three, we've showed general obligation bonds ranging from $5.8 to $24.9 million, which would cost the average taxpayer in the range of $6 to $25 million, $25, $6 to $25 a year. And then if you wanted to do this in the farmer's market, it would mean the range could go up to $29 a year at the high end. And a similar comparison of the funding options, basically the same items that we talked about earlier, you know, whether you're able to fund all four of the council-identified projects, what the impact on taxpayers is, and what the impact is on the overlapping taxing districts.
This is the fashion show that takes place now in the park blocks. The quality of the urban experience gives us an economic edge. Firms and individuals choose to work, invest, live, or visit because of the quality of the public realm, the quality of the urban experience. It helps to create jobs in all sectors, building our community identity and our community. Thank you.
You. So I've got Mike and Betty in the queue and Claire. And so, George or Alan, do either one of you want to be in the queue?
Not right now.
Okay. A couple of things that came to mind. A couple of things that came to my mind is whether, to consider whether we should, Alan, did you want to speak?
Not at this point, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Whether you wanted, in this particular, looking at these things, whether you want to think about taking a bite at a time, over time, as opposed to, and trying to do the whole, whole thing. And, the other thing I was thinking about in terms of the, the public engagement and placemaking is, and this came out of a conversation I had with some folks today, I think it would be really helpful for us to try to figure out how you do the engagement of going out to the neighborhoods. It would be helpful to find out what could happen in a downtown that would make people from Bethel want to come into our downtown. It would be helpful to know people from Churchill, and people from Harlow, and, and your, Gillum, and all of that, yep, all of that. So, I, I don't know if that's a different approach, but to me, it'd be one where you really try to get the feeling of what people are interested in in different parts of the community, that we might see some patterns there, that people would be, would find, that they would be asking for it if they could. So I just wanted to put that out to you.
We're actually planning on taking that approach and have written that into the scope.
That's great, that's great. And then, and maybe, I know, in the past, we've done it in the parks. I'd just like to know what the approach that you're gonna, when you get it ready, of how you're gonna try to do that kind of outreach in the neighborhoods. Thank you. Mike, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with both her points. To the second one, that was the first thing that I brought up, is that we're going to revitalize downtown. Let's try and make it welcoming to everybody. There are plenty of folks from Sheldon area and Gillum area, double-digit percentages of neighbors of mine who quite simply never come downtown, never. And, I hope we do a good job of the conversation that would make them feel differently about that, because it should be everyone's downtown. I, I absolutely agree with the idea of incremental. You guys have done a wonderful job putting together the options, answering the council's questions, which you were absolutely doing. We asked a question, you came back with several good answers and selections of possibilities. So, please don't take me wrong when I say this, because what I'm going to talk about is our decision to fund a project like this, this much. So when I say to spend that much money on revitalizing our park downtown under the current set of obligations that the city has, is obscene. And there's simply no way I would ever agree to spend that much money on our downtown core right now. Not when we don't have a viable Phase Two plan for City Hall, not when we don't even know where that money would come from. So to spend $25 million on, on our downtown park, when we've yet to even identify how we'll complete City Hall, to me is, is really completely out of line for us to do. So, I, as I said before, that much, maybe? I don't even know how much that much is. Maybe. But, it seems inordinately extravagant to me, of us, to make such a decision.
Betty?
Thank you. I think our park blocks are fine as they are, except that we need a good restroom, not a porta potty. And if people come downtown, go to dinner, shop, walk around, they have to find a restroom. Even during the art walk, I, I just walked right into Davis, but, but not everybody would have the gall to do that. Just, I just said hello and walked on in. But it is, it is a human necessity, a restroom. And also, you mentioned places to sit, move, someplace I've been saying for years, we need movable chairs, so that people can not only sit, but they can form their own groups by moving chairs. Stationary tables some places, movable chairs. I think the park, I've been to the park blocks when they were having Slug Queen tryouts and Slug Queen celebrations, and people are really happy to be there. I was there once when there were some out-of-town people, and a woman was talking on her telephone. She'd just checked into the Hilton, talking to somebody at home, and she said, "You wouldn't believe what I'm seeing," when I walked out of the Hilton. And, she said, "I just came out and sat on a park bench, and this is the strangest thing." Anyway, there, there could be, but, but a restroom is, and places to sit, those are really important. I don't think we need to spend a lot of money there now. I don't agree with Mike that it's not important to spend money downtown, because downtown is everybody's neighborhood, and it's our. It should be clean and well-kept, and, and accessible means places to sit and places to go to the restroom. Thank you.
Claire?
Thank you. So I'm really pleased to see that you guys have taken steps to initiate the placemaking review, and I think that will be very informative to any decisions that we might want to make for this space and other public spaces downtown. And I absolutely agree with the mayor and Councilor Clark that we want to see how these spaces might work for folks who don't typically come downtown, or don't come downtown very frequently, as well as for the folks who currently work downtown or live there. And, the mayor stole my thunder on the, could we start with the phased-in approach? Because I like the idea, you know, we might, we're probably get a whole list of wonderful things that people can envision there, and they will be out of bounds in terms of immediate funding. And so, I would like us to be thinking how we might start with some basic improvements, and then phase in those more wonderful amenities over time, whatever we identify those as. And I would apply that to any of the public spaces that we're looking at. I would really like to see the park blocks revitalized. I, I don't agree that they're just fine. I think there's too much concrete, they're kind of awkward. I think they need to be more pleasant to sit in and relax in, you know, for downtown workers to come and enjoy, even when they're not being used by programmed events. And, but I absolutely agree with Councilor Clark that we need to be very mindful of the other needs. We have many parks in, in my ward that have, are in dire need of some improvements, of even being developed. And I wouldn't want to prejudice those to improve the park blocks solely, or even other downtown spaces. So I think we need to be balancing those things while we think about these ideas. So I appreciate the various strategies, but I really want to see what comes out of that placemaking conversation. And I think the idea of phasing in, because I can imagine us having some other sorts of revenue in the future that we don't have access to right now, that might be able to help us bring some of those amenities online.
George?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at page 23 of the AAS, option C, and I see Broadway Plaza improvements, including possible purchase of adjacent property for redevelopment. What, what does that mean?
I think at one time, when we were looking at the Broadway Plaza, and, as you recall, we went out seeking for a win-win solution, and maybe looking at, instead of developing the plaza, maybe the adjacent property gets developed. And so, in the past, we've used property acquisition as a way to make those kinds of things happen. The Broadway Commerce Center is a really good example. It was put out there as an option. It's not something that we've really talked about.
I see. Which property was this?
The property immediately adjacent to the...
The donut, and the rug, the donut store and rug store, okay. I see.
And as we've discussed, there's no interest in selling that property, so I think that conversation is moot at this point.
Yeah, okay. Well, you know, I see under, under here, that one of the improvements, benches, I mean, there used to be benches. They're, they're stored in the atrium right now. Down below that, there's City Hall Plaza improvements, defraying additional costs within the existing project budget, or allowing for more enhancements in higher-quality materials and features such as a fountain and art that maybe be on the current scope. And then, down below that, 8th Avenue and Lamont Street improvements, including two-way traffic, pedestrian, bicycle path repairs, enhancements, as well as lighting, landscaping, signage. We don't really see any kind of, you know, estimated, like, what would this cost in a line item fashion? And I'd just like to point out, this particular, when the street improvements and lighting, that's, that's to Public Works. But we took $2.85 million from Public Works to add to the City Hall project to build an empty fourth floor, which I never understood why, why the council majority approved that. So now what we're seeing is because of that, now there's all these unfilled needs here that we're trying to backfill with either a geo-bond or keeping the urban renewal district going, which we wouldn't have had to do if we didn't budget for that empty fourth floor. So, I just want to point that out. I know that's not your, you didn't make that decision. But, and you know, there's been a lot of talk lately about trust, and lack of trust in citizens and their government, and several different matters, and I, I just see this as a way to explode whatever little improvements have been, been made in that recently. People are going all the way, that this was taken for City Hall, that Public Works could have fixed this, but now we want to put it on an urban renewal. It's, it's, it's going to cause confusion and, and even more mistrust. If we, if we keep proceeding this way and tacking all these projects on into one big grand package, I think it would surely be rejected by the voters, and it could endanger the ones that we think are most important, personally. That's just an opinion. I guess I'm done, Mayor. Thank you.
Chris?
I have it in the queue, Mayor, this is Alan.
Shirley?
Yeah, as, as, one of the people that was a big advocate for this early on, because having had a background in, in parks, I think having a good public space amenity downtown was really important, and this was the founding place to do that. And I thought there would be some enthusiasm about kind of revitalizing it and making it a great place downtown. And I've kind of been underwhelmed by the lack of real interest in this. You know, there's interest, but not enthusiasm. Let me put it that way. Oh yeah, sure, I'd love to see it, but, you know, not if it's really going to cost any money, and not if it's really going to do it. And I understand that. That's not me grousing. That's me being realistic, and saying, yeah, there are a lot of things that need to get done. And if this is fifth or sixth on the list, that's fine. So be it, I understand. And so what we need to think then is, what do we need to do in order to be realistic about what we want downtown? And so I'm willing to say, park blocks would be great if we need, if we can do something very inexpensively. I would agree. If there's some small modification we can make, maybe that's all we can afford to eat right now, and we can't really have a full-meal deal here, we just have to settle for the fries. And so, yeah, just a little one. And, so then we can focus on the, on the other, perhaps more important priorities, the higher things on the list. And so I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, if we're looking at, you know, which of the four items or what are the priorities here, maybe this is not a today item. Maybe this is something that we could consider, something small, maybe funded through some other mechanism, and let's, let's, let's stay tight in our, in our expectations. And, I'm very conscious of the fact that many of the decisions we're having to make downtown, City Hall is a good one, that is not a self-contained decision. We can't make all the decisions about City Hall by ourselves. We're part of a larger continuity of partners. We've talked a lot about partnership, county partnership, you know, city partnership, state, you know, there's a lot of different partnerships involved here, and some of these partnerships have not gelled yet. And so in terms of thinking about what the ultimate City Hall will look like, requires some ongoing conversation with some of the other players who might be involved with it. I mean, we're moving, I think, at the speed that you can only move at when you've got other folks that need to be part of the conversation. If we could just do this unilaterally, I could have it done next week, or we could have it done next week. But I don't think that would be in our best interest. So it's frustrating to have to go this slowly about something that seems like it should be so clear, but for something this big, that's often the pace at which it goes. So I'm, I'm not uncomfortable with that, and I'm, I'm confident of what the outcome will be. But with regard to the park blocks, I'm hearing what I'm hearing, and I'm willing to make that, that step.
Alan?
Thank you, Mayor. I really liked the vision thing that staff brought to this, looking at the, you know, the whole gamut. As for me, I'm, I'm more interested in a phased-in approach, certainly not the $25 million estimate. There are numerous other priorities in parks that are, would be way ahead of, of this project if it were that amount. You know, I have the same issue with Keiki Plaza, and is it the highest priority for parks investment in our community? I think you get a lot of different opinions on that, but I don't think this one is in, at that range. So, I would like to see it revitalized and spruced up. When was the last time the park blocks was renovated?
We did the park blocks master plan in about 2006, and as a result of that, we spent about $300,000 in urban renewal funds. So, not significantly since then.
What about before that? I mean, that's not, that's kind of peanuts, $300,000 from a park.
Oh, 70s, 60s, 68, I found, right?
Long, long, long time ago. Okay. So, you know, you know, even at $8.2 million, you know, everything's just so darn expensive. It just costs so much to do this stuff. Even at that level, I think there's a phase in of that proposal, where we could work on things over time that would, would make the park blocks a lot better. In the order of these projects, in the grander scheme of things, for the downtown improvement projects, I'd put this as a distant third, unless it were just a very modest phased-in approach, and I put that behind the high-speed fiber and the farmer's market.
Thank you, Alan. I guess the only other point I would make is that I think sometimes what it confounds people is they don't know where we're going, and they don't know what we aspire to do. And so even if we don't have the money now, I think for us to, to aspire, and to put out in front of us what we're aiming at, that we want to get at over time, makes really good sense. And so, I would encourage us to at least have that kind of conversation about where is it we want to go, what would we like to see, that we've agreed on this, and then you can look at it over time and see what we can plug in as the dollars become available, rather than saying, oh, we happened to come upon this, let's go spend it. I don't, I, you know, I just think we have to do it the other way. And I cannot agree with Betty more, and I just think it, it makes absolutely no sense for us not to tackle the restroom situation as soon as we possibly can. I think it's a, it's a priority for everybody, of every age, of every ability, of everything, that you have enough public restrooms to use so that people can think about going places and, and enjoying being there, so...
Pun intended?
No, yeah, exactly, yeah. Being there, going there, going there and being there, yes, that would be, pun intended or something, right? Anyway. And if we can't do the more expensive ones, I've even suggested to the manager to think about fixing up the ones we have and actually paying people to be attendants to keep them safe and, and usable. So, I'm, I'm willing to look at a full range. The thing I'm not willing to do is have us go years without having proper restroom facilities. That seems just like fundamental for, for a city, and especially for a downtown that you actually want people to come into. Okay, so I think we are ready to, thank you very much, and we're going to close down the work session, and we'll be back at 7:00.
Mayor, council, consent agenda?
Consent agenda, you want to do the consent agenda?
Yeah, we can get that out of the way.
Okay.
And I will phone in, Laura.
All right. So, why don't you, we're going to move that, we're going to actually do the consent agenda, consent calendar.
So, I've moved to adopt, I'm, ah, going too far. I've moved to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second. Moved and seconded? Any, any items that anybody has concerns about? Okay, then, are all those in...
We're going to move that, we're going to actually do the...
It's you being repeated.
Okay.
It's the drive-up window for Alan, I guess.
Okay, all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. I hear you, George polling. Alan?
Yeah.
Eight in favor and one in opposition. We're done with that. See you back at 7:00. See you back at 7:00.